Please rise for silent indication followed by pledge allegiance. Amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Court call the roll?
Councilman Foley?
Here.
Councilman Geppert?
Here.
Councilman Green?
Here.
Mayor Scott Brooks?
Here.
Here. All five in attendance tonight. Moving on to item four. Parks and Rec Director Susan Lavallo and her festive self. Right on.
All right.
Sam said you were all on the good list, so here's some candy cane stuff.
All right, right on. Tell us about what's going on in Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Susan Lavallo, Parks and Recreation Director, AKA the head elf for tonight's report. The Parks and Recreation Department is getting ready for everything to welcome Santa into our great city. Starting tomorrow at 11:19, we have holiday carols, crafts, and decorations at the Adult Activity Center, starting at 12:30. This activity is geared for our 55 and up community. 11:23, High Point Church will host a free Thanksgiving dinner at the Lakeside Community Center, starting at 10:00 a.m. This is free and open to the public. 11:29, Touch of Magic brings back the holiday market to Riverwalk Park, starting at 10:00 a.m. Event is free and open to the public. Starting the month of December, we have the Holiday Star Search, which will be available all month long in Riverwalk, City Center, All Children's Park, and Airport Road Parks. This is like our elf hunt that we've had before, but they're stars because it's Hollywood movies are the theme to this year's parade. So that will be going on. You can search them in all parks or one park, but once you find them, just come on down to the Dorothy Hucle City Center Annex on Monday through Friday between 8:00 and 4:30, and kids can pick up their prizes there. Light up Port Orange Holiday House Decorating Contest will take place from December 6th to the 21st, each evening from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. within the city of Port Orange. A map of participating homes will be posted on the Parks and Recreation website and our Facebook page during the first week of December. And then everybody can start touring the homes and voting for their favorite home, and then prizes will be awarded. And I believe the mayor will hand out those prizes. Port Orange Community Trust will have their annual gingerbread house giveaway, December 6th, at the tree lighting. Completed gingerbread houses then are due back to the Lakeside Community Center on December 13th. For more information, please visit the POCtrust.org website. December 6th, Christmas in the Park, brought to you by the city of Port Orange. Join us for a tree, as we light up the trees here at City Center, listen to the community choir, and have a fun-filled family time to kick off the holidays. That event starts at 5:30. On 12/7, the 47th Annual Holiday Parade starts at 2:00 p.m. on Dunlauton and Jackson. The parade will proceed east to Spruce Creek Road and Secret, but I heard Santa and the mayor will be there, so be ready for that. On 12/12, Christmas in Margaritaville, at the Adult Activity Center, starting at 5:30. So all parrot heads come on out, enjoy an adult evening of dinner and dancing for the 55-plus community. Unfortunately, though, this event is full, and there are 50 people on the waiting list for that event.
Wow, that's awesome.
12/13, the rec is hosting a Christmas PJ Family Dance. Put on your favorite holiday PJs and dance on over to the rec, starts at 5:00. Pre-registration is required for that event, and registration is currently open. 12/13 will be the last car show at City Center Under the Oaks. Brought to you by the East Coast Cruisers, that starts at 3:00 p.m. The event is free and open to the public. 12/15, bring the little ones to meet Santa, enjoy cookies and storytime, starting at 5:30 at the Lakeside Center. Pre-registration starts December 1st for that event. 12/16 through the 18th, the Parks and Rec team will have the big guy, that's right, Santa, at the rec for family photos. At 6:00 p.m. each night, pre-registration opens on December 1st. So a lot going on for the holidays, but in addition to the holidays, we also wanted to update you on a few of our projects that are getting started, either underway, getting started, or starting directly right after the New Year. So our first Parks Bond project all around the park is in the final stages of design. The renewed park will include a new playground, outdoor lighted basketball court, to accompany the lighted tennis and pickleball court, and a new to our area will be a bicycle playground. We will apply for echo on this project, so we expect this to go out to bid in February. The second bond project will be the City Center Sports Complex Expansion. It is also in the final stages of design. This project will be on the back seven acres of Silver Sands Middle School. We did that land swap. The project will include two new soccer fields, restrooms, concession, and parking. We anticipate this project to go out to bid also in February. So things are starting to move on the bond projects. The bond projects three and four, White Place and the Train Depot, they are in the beginning stages of design. As we get more definitive designs, we will bring that back to make sure you guys get a peek at that. The sixth bond project will be the Karassi Park Renovations. It is on the agenda, actually on 12/9, for approval for design. This will include digging up some of those fields and putting in some drainage. As you know, when it rains, we lose a lot of game time just due to the type of soil we have. So we're gonna put some drainage in, and we're gonna put new dirt in, sod, irrigation, and fence on two of the fields. And then next year, we'll tackle the next two fields. The golf course also has some projects underway. They are renovating all the bunkers on the course. They're about 25% complete. So what they're doing is they're taking out all the old sand, they're cleaning the sock drains in there so that the sand traps will drain, and then they'll replace the bunkers with the new sand. The cart barn at Cypress Head will get a new roof starting next month, followed by a new paint job. And early next year, we will start the renovations of the tee boxes on the course and the artificial tee line. Causeway Park, south boat ramps and parking improvements will begin on January 5th. We will close the south ramps and about 30% of the parking. The north ramps, fishing piers, and restrooms will remain open for most of the project. It is expected to be completed in July. Updates will be posted to our website under Parks and Recreation Projects. There is a sign down there right now that has the QR code, so if people want to scan that, it'll take them right to that page. And we'll also put updates on our social media to keep everyone up to date, not just with that project, but with all these projects we spoke about tonight. In addition to those projects, we also have nine other projects that will be completed or started in 2026. So a lot of new things coming into Parks and Rec. Our athletic team has the following program starting in December. December 1st, we have the Youth Flag Football Begins at Karassi and City Center Parks. Registration is full for this program, and there's 43 kids on the waiting list. Youth Tennis starts December 1st, and registration is currently open. This league plays at Airport Road Park on Saturday mornings. Adult Kickball Games start on December 2nd at City Center. Registration is also full for that program. And Little Oranges, which is our preschool sports program, is underway until December 10th. That happens at the rec and the City Center Sports Complex. So, oof, a lot's going on in the month of December. But our entire team and myself just want to wish you and all the citizens a very happy holiday and a bright new year. And I can answer any questions I hope that you might have.
Read any questions?
No, I just...
I just want to commend you guys, really exciting, really excited about all the events and just, you know, Parks has been so special to me, the whole group, since I grew up, you know, since I was, what, five years old, can remember. And so this is my favorite time of year. Me and my family have already started outlining what we're gonna do and when we're gonna do it. And so just appreciate you and all of staff and all the hard work that goes in, because it's not easy, but it is, it's part of what makes, you know, the season very magical for kids. And so I know I've got a nine-year-old who can't wait, so.
Yeah, thank you, Sam.
Tracy?
No, echoing what Rita's saying, I mean, we already know Parks Bond Initiative was huge and we needed it, and you just echoed it again. 50 adults waiting, 43 kids waiting on standby, so we know that the expansion was desperately needed. It's nice to see that it's, 2026 is a big year for that to all come, so thank you for everything your staff and you do. Thank you.
Sean?
I just want to say thank you. I get the opportunity to coach your flag football. And I'll tell you, we need coaches. 45 kids waiting on a list is, that can field four more teams. And that's a shame, but I'm glad we're popular in that aspect. There was just, for 13 and under, it was 120 kids, boys and girls, tried out for just 13 and under. So 11, 12, 13-year-olds, so yeah. If anybody out there wants to step up and serve, that would be a great opportunity to help coach these leagues. It's popular.
Again, I'm gonna thanks, thank you on that. And then I gotta know, am I riding with him in the parade again? Because old shovel hands over here, old shovel hands over here didn't get us to the end, and we ran out of candy. So I gotta know, am I riding with him, or do I gotta buy more candy?
You can never have enough candy, I think is the rule, but until we get the head count, we don't know how many we have yet.
Head count will be a lot.
I'm gonna put some tape, I'm gonna put mittens on his hands, so he can't throw so much.
And thanks you guys for your support of the department and all that we do, so we appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Susan.
You got a round of applause and a half-standing ovation. Outstanding, excellent. All right, moving on to item B, Consent Agenda. Have any public comments on consent agenda items only? Item six through 11, public comments on consent agenda items only. Seeing none, can I get a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda items six through 11?
Move to approve consent agenda items six through 11, second.
Have a motion and a second. Court call the roll?
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Geppert?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Mayor Scott Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Scott Brooks?
Yes, 5-0. All right, moving on to section C. City Council, Eastport Business Center, CRA Joint Special Meeting. We will be temporarily suspending the meeting as the city council. I now call the special joint meeting of the Eastport Business Center, Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Port Orange City Council to order. Will the clerk call the roll for the members of the Eastport Business Center community?
Councilman Foley?
Here.
I'm sorry, Lance Green?
Here.
Jonathan Foley?
Here.
Scott Stoller?
Here.
Tracy Brooks?
Here.
Chairman Sean Gepper?
Here.
All in attendance, will clerk call the roll for the members of the city council?
Lance Green?
Here.
Sean Gepper?
Here.
Tracy Brooks?
Here.
Jonathan Foley?
Here.
Mayor Scott Stoller?
Here, all in attendance. Are there any objections to the notice of the meeting? Hearing no objection, the notice is accepted. I will be opening the item for presentation by staff and joint discussion by the city council and the CRA. Chairman Geppert will call for the vote by the CRA, and I will call for the vote by the city council. To open these items, item two is the approval of BLK Boom Trucks LLC Doing Business as BLK Boom Trucks Southeast Economic Incentive Agreement as it relates to Eastport CRA redevelopment plan and LDC Chapter 20, the targeted business. May I have a motion and a second from the city council?
Move to approve, one second.
Have a motion and a second to have that on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, hang on one second, I got a legal issue. Mayor, so the company that I work with is doing business with Dick.
Okay.
Do I need to abstain?
Yeah, I would go ahead and abstain.
Okay, so I'm gonna abstain.
We need to note that anywhere particular, Matt, or?
We'll get a form filled out, but, yeah, he's announced a conflict, so he'll be abstaining from the vote as to the CRA and also the city council. We'll get the form filled out.
Okay, no worries.
Understood.
Move to approve, I'm sorry, may I have a motion and a second for the CRA?
Move to approve, one second.
A motion and a second, open does the CRA. Tim Berman, welcome.
Thank you, Tim Berman, team member. The following is a request from BLK Boom Trucks for incentive agreement there. They are currently based out of Toronto, and they are looking to relocate, are relocating a facility in Port Orange here and the Eastport facility there. Their trucks that they make are for basically the construction industry, mainly building supplies, also tree trimming. And other trucks there, we shoot a couple examples in that report there, that they would be manufacturing here in the Port Orange facility. As we stated, basically, we've been working with them for about two years on this site. They have completed building plan review, site plan review, and have begun construction. During that time, basically, they have paid the fees associated with those applications, along with the go for porters relocation, which has been completed. Also, too, this is within 660 feet of a bald eagle's nest, so they are having to pay monitoring costs associated with that as they go under construction for about six months period then. So they have requested the incentive agreement package here. Again, this would be basically reimbursed through the Eastport CRA as part of the incentives that we offer there for the costs that have already occurred, which is around over $100,000 there in terms of permit fees, and also the environmental fees in terms of go for mitigation and the bald eagle monitoring. And they've also requested $19,000 in additional costs to be reimbursed here in terms of if they have to continue paying the eagle monitoring fee, that would cover that then, along with associated debt, building permits for dumpster enclosure, parking lot lighting, and fencing as they wrap up the permitting process for the project then. Basically, hope to be under construction here, there in early 2026, and be completed by late summer of 2026 there to be operation here in Port Orange. And representatives from business are here too, if you'd like to talk to them.
Would they like to come up and have a moment?
Come talk, come talk us out of it.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Elmer Ivan. I'm the owner and founder of BLK Boom Trucks, 34 years ago. So we're excited to open up an assembly facility. So what we do is we take trucks and we install truckload cranes and the construction industry and the tree killer room. Typically, we have 150 people up in truck, and we're looking to expand down here to up to 40 people and eventually build a second phase, recently acquired and just north of us, which will be another 20 to 25 people in the next few years. 75% are technicians. We train in-house. So, you know, kids out of high school who got technical aptitude, you know, like working engines or like to fill around. We prefer powering, you know, eager guys got some mechanical skills, and we train in-house into, you know, directing careers. So we feel we bring great value in that regards to the local community, and we're excited for all the support. You know, we chose Port Orange out of business ties over here, partner, so we're excited for the future.
Excellent. I'm gonna put in a quick little plug that annually, the Port Orange-South Etona Chamber of Commerce does a job fair where they target a lot of the high school seniors getting ready to graduate, so I would encourage you guys to be part of that. It's actually, yeah, it's been a great program, it's been well-attended, and you know, a lot of, not every kid wants to go off to college. And so a lot of them are looking for this very thing to find out what's out there in the community they might want to get involved in, so it might be a great opportunity for everybody there.
It's a great program.
Thanks. Just stand by, just one second. Council, any questions, CRA and council members?
No questions.
No?
Not at all.
All right. Guess you're off the hook easy on that then. Thanks. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to council, final comments from CRA and city council prior to vote. Chairman Geppert, take it away.
Yes, can I have the roll call, please?
Lance Green?
Abstain.
Jonathan Foley?
Yes.
Scott Stoller?
Yes.
Tracy Brooks?
Yes.
Chairman Sean Gepper?
Yes.
Then call the total.
Okay, that's 4-0 with one abstained?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, call the roll for the city council? Clerk call the roll?
Lance Green?
Abstain.
Sean Geppert?
Yes.
Tracy Brooks?
Yes.
Jonathan Foley?
Yes.
Mayor Scott Stoller?
Yes, 4-0 with one abstained. Any further business to be brought before the members of the Eastport Redevelopment Agency and the city council? Hearing and seeing none, the special joint meeting is now adjourned, and we will return to our duties as only the Port Orange City Council. Item D, Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Okay, we'll come back to that one. And I think we're gonna come back to the Cops for Christmas. Our presenter on that is actually currently tied up in his professional duties, so he'll be here in a little bit. So let's move on to comments and additional items. City council members, Reed?
Yeah, just two quick things. I had a resident call me today, or sorry, called me Friday with a concern about e-bikes on sidewalks. I guess, you know, these are becoming more and more popular with kids riding them to school, other people riding them places. And unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of people who are using them are just not being cautious, and it's putting some of our pedestrians that are out there walking in some precarious situations. He said he's almost been hit two or three times, and I ended up talking to a couple other people who feel the same way. So I did pass that information on to Wayne. I'm not sure what other cities are doing. Unfortunately, I don't like policing every little thing, and I don't like asking our officers to have to look for more things out there while they're already trying to do a hard job. But when people can't be responsible and just be careful and put other people's lives in danger, you know, this guy I spoke to is 84 years old. I don't want to think what it'd be like if he gets hit by one of those, you know, 20, 25 miles an hour. So I just want to let you guys know about that call. I'm not sure how any of you feel about it, but Wayne's gonna just find out what some other cities are doing in that regard. And the other thing, I just want to say thank you to you guys up here on council, as well as staff. You know, my actual full-time job has been very trying. In fact, I was looking, I was gone 33 out of 52 days, and it was miserable. But that's come to a close now, and I get to be home again for the next several months, most of the time. But I appreciate you guys, you know, working through everything, and also Wayne, Robin, and everyone on staff. Anytime I have been gone, being able to stay in communication, whether that's email, phone calls, I've never felt like I was out of the loop for one second, and I think that's just a testament to the great people we have in place. So I just want to say thank you to them for that.
Excellent. Tracy?
What I'm showing him is a whole listing of e-bikes information. Channel 9 News, two days ago, actually brought up that Honor Parimal Hospital, Children's Hospital, showed a 205% increase over the past year of strictly e-bike incidences. 205% increase. So it is, it is a problem. At the same time, Channel 9 News brought up that there's a House Bill 243 and a Senate Bill 462 that is being pushed along through the state level. So that's, that's coming one way or the other. There's gonna be new rules and regulations down the line. How we adopt and amend to that, you know, we have to get that once that bill comes out. But one of the big things is, is understanding that there's three classifications of e-bikes. All of them are pedal assisted. You got a class one, two, and three. They're all pedal assisted. But the big one is on class three is that it reaches a top speed of 28 miles an hour. The other two have to be 20 miles an hour and less. Those are also the ones that are deemed allowed on sidewalks. Anything over 20 has to be in the road. That is the rules and regulations. Anybody under the age of 16 is supposed to be wearing a helmet. That's a bicycle rule. And we know, we see that, not done all the time. But the big one, and the one that I want to make sure that everybody understands that may be watching or hearing, is that the motor, anything over 750 watts of power and above is not deemed an e-bike for any use on the road or on the sidewalk. And that's where kids are gonna get in trouble. And being pedal assist, there's, there's things on the internet showing people how to go out and literally put fake pedals on these e-motocycles to make them look like bicycles. This is what our officers are having to deal with. So saying all that, Sunday, walking through Best Buy, there is nine e-bike styles and scooters available because of Christmas. So all I can do is ask that parents, when they're looking at going and buying, make sure you buy the safety equipment that's needed for their kids, keep them safe. But also maintain that you're buying something that is not gonna get your child a ticket. Now, I've said this amongst a lot of friends, a ticket on an electric scooter means that when they go, when they hit 16, means they've had a ticket before their driver's license. So they get their driver's license and they get suspended instantly. Now, I don't know about you, I got two kids that was fun when they were going through, learning how to drive, and insurance was lovely. But how would you like to have a 16-year-old that has a suspended license right off the bat and insure them? All because of an e-bike. So be wary, understand the informations and the rules. That way, when Christmas rolls around, that your kids are safe and that you don't have heartache down the roads with your kids and what the future may hold insurance-wise. Because this, this is getting, this is getting bad. Scott?
Just a quick comment on that. This is one of those deals where I'm actually happy that the state is gonna step in and legislate, because the reality of it is, is a lot of these e-bikes hold a really large charge, and so folks are gonna go from one community to the next and so forth and so on. So because of that, just like on our motor vehicle laws, they need to know that the, you know, whether you're riding your e-bike in Arman, Port Orange, South Etona, Edgewater, Unincorporated, Lusia County, the laws are the same, because I think it's gonna be problematic around the state where certain communities have already legislated and created sets of rules that most people are not gonna have any idea about coming and going through those municipalities. So kinda glad to see the state doing that. Sean?
Oh, so I just want to talk a little about some of the things that have been going on in the city. I don't know if every citizen gets this city manager's update, but missed the opportunity for our fire department to push in a new vehicle, which is pretty awesome, that we're giving them the tools they need to protect our citizens. Also, there's that commercial development going up on Reed Canal, just east of the high school. They're moving along really well, which, which helps us providing opportunities for small businesses to have a place to have businesses out of in our city, which is really important. And also seeing, you know, the continuing efforts from our staff to continue, even though it's kinda not the rainy season, we haven't had to talk about rain lately, they're continuing to clean out ponds and work on our infrastructure, sidewalks, everything. It's just, it's nice to see that ongoing, not just a reaction, but being proactive, so I really appreciate that. Also, had mentioned to our assistant city manager, there was an email sent to me from a citizen that there's a real concern out in front of the middle school out there off of Airport Road where another child has been, was hit. And we just, I know you guys are gonna work with the county and work on that, but it's just happening too frequently. So I hope that we can encourage the county school board to help us out out there for our citizens going to that school. I don't know how that all works, but you can only do so much patrolling, but there needs to be some help out there with that for someone gets killed. That's all I have.
Lance?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo on what Sean said about the, again, another child hit going to school in Port Orange. And it's, it's all too frequent. And I cannot stress enough of how disappointed I am at people still speeding through the school zone on a daily basis. And we have kids that go to different schools at different times. The middle schoolers are a little bit different, because there's always going against the grain of traffic, coming out of Cypress Head, coming out of Waters Edge, everybody's turning right, they look left. They never look to the right to see the kid coming. And we've had this situation go on for years. It was really bad at Waters Edge for a while, but again, it's gonna go back to we have to pay attention in the school zones. We have to pay attention in the school times. We live in the community with a lot of schools. And again, I just cannot stress it enough, another child hit going to school is not acceptable. The other issue I wanted to bring up, though, was on consent agenda tonight, on item C. You will see where there was a grant, and we are applying for a grant to buy and demolish 12 homes that have been flooded. Okay, that's 12 homes that we are losing residents, and that's 12 homes that we are losing tax revenue, and we are losing parts of our community. That's all I got.
I want to touch base too on, sorry, coming back to the consent agenda. There was information in there about the delay on Oak Street and Jackson Street and the construction, where we extended about another 180 days. So this is another example of the city being prepared and getting things done, but waiting on other jurisdictions like Florida Power and Light to get them power lines moved. And I just want the citizens to know that sometimes you want it done, you know, especially when it comes to flooding, obviously, in infrastructure. Why can't you do it quicker? And we're doing everything we can to do it quicker, but we're at the mercy of something we cannot control. And now we're, this is like, I think, the second extension with this to, for the power lines to be, you know, now another 180 days. It's gonna take us probably into March of next year now.
Probably.
Yeah, so just, you know, I want people to understand that some things are just, we can't control.
I did talk to the city manager before the meeting tonight, and I've asked him to find an opportunity to bring back a presentation to us on pedestrian and bicycle accidents, looking at like the last three or four years, and geographically speaking, in certain areas where we've had more, and kinda talk to us a little bit about what some options may be, what kind of new technology may be out there. This latest accident, by the way, turned out not to be what a lot of them are, which is that per-
a lot of them are, which is that person making the right turn, coming out, and they just don't see it. That's actually not what happened in this particular one, but nonetheless, still an accident involving motor vehicle and a child. Um, so we'll look at these, and a lot of these areas involve roadways, um, that are state-owned and maintained or county-owned and maintained, um, but we need to work with our, with our partners collectively in some of these areas to, to see what we can do, uh, to try to improve the safety there. And so much of it is just simply distracted driving people in a hurry, talking on their phones, doing whatever, and, and just not paying attention, so. All right, um, city attorney comments?
Nothing tonight.
All right, city manager? If you guys will keep an eye on Wayne Jean, we'll try to get him in when he gets a chance. Item seventeen, Art House Annual Update.
He's up.
Is he in? Can I, I, I appreciate you yielding to him.
I just became very nervous.
No, no, no. Come on in. Listen, all these folks showed up tonight wearing red because they knew you were coming, and they know how much Christmas means to you, so.
Christmas means a lot.
Listen, you have an opportunity tonight, brother. Look at these people behind you. These people are looking to support what you guys, what he is fixing to talk about. Y'all?
I taught, y'all are doing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you do what you want, so a lot of the folks, uh, probably didn't expect to see you tonight, but I think they're gonna appreciate what you've got to say and what you guys do every year for the community, so it is your show. Go ahead.
Well, I'm Officer Jean, Port Orange Police Department. I'm also the founder of Spouses Back in Blue. Uh, we joined forces together in twenty-twenty to create what's called Pops for Christmas. Uh, last year, we provided four-hundred-and-ninety children with Christmas. And that's, to get some math behind it, I'm not good at it, but seven gifts to give, teach children. It is, like I always say when I'm here, is it's not a, a one-person show. It is the community coming together, you know, as a family to provide the children with the gifts that they get. Uh, there is no way in the world that we could provide this many children with gifts or food without the community. And I thank God every day that I get the pleasure, the privilege, to do what I do. And that I get to work with so many great people that they boss me around at this point. They tell me when I'm doing wrong, they tell me when I'm doing right, and there's only, there's one main one, she says.
She's already been here waiting on you, so.
But it is, it is not a one-person show. It is not. It is a, a community coming together to help those who are less fortunate.
So how can they help?
So, Port Orange Police Department, uh, I have to go wrap my box here in a little bit. Is accepting donations, toy donations, or, uh, Spouses Back in Blue is accepting monetary donations. And just so you understand what monetary donation is, we go shopping for the kids. The kids don't go with us. So we go shopping for the children. Last year, we spent fifteen thousand dollars shopping for the kids. On top of all the toy donations that the community is providing us, providing the children. We have a day where we wrap toys. Uh, if you want to know more about that and what involved in it, I'll let you come out. Uh, except the Port Orange Pavilion again, uh, they have been nice to donate the building to us to use again. Monetary donations can be written at Spouses Back in Blue. I always tell everybody to put the combination Pops for Christmas, because that's where it's going. The toy donations will be at the Port Orange Police Department, uh, several locations, LA Fitness. There's probably twenty, twenty-five locations throughout the city.
What's the, what's the deadline for them to drop off toys?
Deadline is December nineteenth. It is already, we've already started the collection. I'm a little bit behind, it's like, I apologize for my tardiness. And this is an amazing program. It really is. I have to thank Chief, Chief Marine for allowing, allowing this to happen. Because I, I don't think there's a lot of places, law enforcement-wise, in many communities that open up to citizens like we do and welcome the citizens in to help and, and, and be a part of the program. In fact, over the past year since last Pops for Christmas, I've had several citizens stop me in uniform and out of uniform, uh, and thanked me for, you know, letting them to be a part of it. Again, it's, it's not one person, it's not five people, it's hundreds of people doing this. And without the support of the community, this cannot, this cannot happen. Four-hundred-and-ninety children. We were all very tired last year. And, uh, like I said last year, the, the greatest gift on Christmas morning is waking up knowing that there's children out there that are having Christmas. And that's all you need. You really, I don't need nothing but a tree. In fact, my wife said, "I was naughty, I'm not gonna give you anything." Uh, but we appreciate everybody's help, the community's help, and, uh, we welcome it. And all I can say is, I'm not going nowhere, Sam. I've been here, April fifteenth years. I love the city of Port Orange and the citizens, and it's just amazing to see.
One of the unique things about this particular program, for those that aren't familiar, is that because this program is done by volunteers who are mostly police officers and spouses and family members, they see a very unique, personal, inside look to some needs in the community. And, and he doesn't like to brag on his team or himself, as you guys can tell, but they've done things in the past where they've gone to calls for service and having to take care of that. But during the course of taking and carrying that, realize there are kids that are sleeping on the floor, that don't have a bed, don't have a mattress. And through this program, they have provided things like that, kids that don't have a pair of sneakers to wear to school, to make sure they put shoes on their feet. So while toys are important, they also identify a lot of other things. They've even had vehicles donated for people who didn't have a way to get themselves to work to support their families and things like that. So the program does a lot of things all year round, but this is their, this is kinda their showcase moment. So I encourage anybody that wants to help out and get those toys and those donations in by December the nineteenth, and these folks will definitely take care of the rest, and you'll feel really good about being part of something like this.
There, uh, there's also, will be a banner at Port Orange Police Department. You can trust it, you are good there. It's inside the Port Orange Police Department. You can make donations through that. It is, uh, it's overwhelming, but in a good way. And we, all you're on, you're negative, negative. This is the one time of the year that we can take all that negative energy that we've got stored up as police officers and citizens, every day life, that you can turn it around and be positive. Speaking of cars. I'm already married by the family, I'm done.
Do you have any of that?
There will be a collection box here at City Hall as well, just to make it easier for everyone.
They'll be right out here in the lobby by the elevator.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. Item seventeen, Art House Annual Update.
It's not fair to follow that.
Good to see you.
Hi, guys. One second. Good evening, Mayor, County Council, and staff. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Cameron Benson. I am the Executive Director of Art House. I am the Vice President of the Volusia County Cultural Alliance, and I also sit on the County Advisory Committee for the Echo Gallery. I am here to first, oh, sorry, Cameron Benson, resident of South Daytona, Executive Director here in Port Orange.
Perfect.
Um, I would like to start off tonight by saying I'm very sorry about the last meeting.
It's okay.
I tried to give Tracy a, a brief update on what was going on and why I could not make it. Um, later on in this presentation, you'll understand the gravity of the situation and why I did, and I beg for forgiveness. Um, second of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Stiltner for being our twenty-ninth annual mayoral judge. During our twenty-twenty-five Street Painting Festival and Child Art Competition held during Port Orange Family Days, we had an amazing crowd. It was rained out the first day. We had so many community members come out and still support. The artwork was amazing, and again, um, I'm glad it was you and not me. I, I was afraid you were gonna get your kneecaps broken in the parking lot. Um, I could, it's a family, but thank you. You did a wonderful job. You stepped up to it, and you did great. Thank you. Um, just a quick update today before I gave you our twenty-twenty-four annual report. We had Sheriff Chipwood come to Art House today and greet over twenty-four homeschool students during our Tuesday homeschool classes. Um, he came for two reasons. One, to see the kids. Two, to get a great picture with the kids in his sponsored classroom. And three, to help support the food bank that Art House, um, is currently helping out with. All of the cultural council, our cultural grant, county cultural grant, um, applicants have a food box, food pantry, for when the government shuts down, but also we're keeping it up through the second week of December, um, to help restore and reimburse those food banks that still need it for those that are, that are struggling. Um, of the sixteen organizations, we've pulled in over eleven-hundred pounds of non-perishable foods for the holidays and will continue to do so. All right, now for my fancy presentation. So here's just an infographic of our service numbers from twenty-twenty-four. Again, we serve, uh, sixty-two public school art programs, a hundred and four Volusia County art educators, sixteen municipalities, and one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven Volusia County residents were served through our classes, programs, and gallery. Sixteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars was raised and donated in art supplies and equipment for Volusia County Schools' art classrooms. Remember, they get around forty-seven to eighty-seven cents per student per year for art supplies. It's not enough. We help mitigate that. Three thousand, six-hundred-and-nineteen service hours of art lessons provided through camps and classes, twelve thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars in tuition and supplies-based scholarships, six thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-one children reached through our program, forty-two-hundred works of art featured in the Art House Gallery and Outreach Exhibits, four thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-four student artists featured in our Art House Gallery and Outreach Exhibits. We did all this through fundraising programming and only twelve thousand, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars in grant funds. Eighty-nine service hours of art therapy, non-clinical, for children with autism ages five to sixteen, one-hundred-and-sixteen service hours of art therapy, non-clinical, for homeless children ages four to sixteen, and three-hundred-and-thirty-one service hours of art therapy for at-risk youth ages ten to sixteen. I'm gonna break down some numbers for you, because while you guys have the biggest hearts, you also need to know the numbers, because you are valuable stewards of Port Orange. One-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars in free gallery admission. We do not choose for, charge for our student art gallery. Um, we had seventeen thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight gallery attendees in twenty-twenty-four. If we were to charge them ten dollars each, we would have pulled in a hundred-and-seventy-five K. That's a free service that we provide to our residents. Nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars in art scholarships, and these, that's just what we awarded to Port Orange students ages ten to eighteen. Nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy in outreach art programs for underprivileged, at-risk, and special-needs youth. Uh, nine-hundred-and-fifty-one students, twenty dollars a lesson, and then gallery attendees in twenty-twenty-four at ten dollars each. And nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars in free community programs, child art competitions, free youth art stations, adult painting classes at the Port Orange Rec, to name a few. Three thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two Port Orange children enrolled in classes and camps. Educational development for twenty-three percent of Port Orange families in a safe and creative atmosphere and, and, um, to inspire growth. And of course, we have some amazing pictures, because I cannot go without bragging with our kids. We have right here, this is Zane. He is part of our special-needs art program. He is a savant. He decorated an entire surfboard in roughly thirty minutes with incredibly detailed figures. We have some of our, our students, our classes, the galleries, they get a little packed. Um, we even have County Council member, Reinhardt, coming out to visit one of our camps. Art House's twenty-twenty-three Port Orange Economic Impact, a style of estimated economic impact for twenty-twenty-four, sorry, that's supposed to be twenty-four. Um, roughly a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-two in non-resident, um, Port Orange dining and shopping. That's eighty-three, eighty-three percent of the families and gallery attendees go out to dinner or go shopping after an art gallery reception. The figure above is just based on a fifteen-dollar meal choice, um, which nowadays that doesn't, doesn't go far. That's barely a kid, a kid's plate. Camps and classes, estimated fifty-five thousand dollars in classes and camp tuition, money spent by families in Port Orange throughout Volusia, and income generated by free Art House programming at the Port Orange Rec Center, murals, and art classes. Okay, so here's where we get into it. We are still doing the classes at the Rec Center, the painting art classes for ten dollars each for all of our Port Orange residents and members of the Rec Center. The Down Under Murals, as you know, you guys entered into a partnership with us for us to provide the murals. We are very excited about that. Here are some of the pictures from the first stage. I am now having to give you a brief update. As you all know, as Councilman Groves spoke before, um, County Council, although they budgeted for the cultural grant that's been going on since nineteen eighty-nine, that provides funding for non-cult, nonprofit cultural organizations in Volusia. Um, that funding goes for free and reduced programming for our residents, that's it. They've pulled the funding. It's still there. They won't let us have it, even though it was approved. We are currently fighting every day, but this is not football, as much as I love the sport. There's no offense, there's no defense. We are playing chess. We have gone through the county, um, the County Charter Commission and working on getting arts and culture put as a core value of our county government. We are working on getting this put on the ballot in twenty-twenty-six, so that it is taken out of their hands. Whereas we can have arts and culture, there was money that has been taken for a motocross facility on wildlife conservation land that, um, it is rumored that this is what the money is going to. So if we take it out of County Council hands and put it on the ballot, much like the Echo, I believe it'll be beneficial for all, and I think that our residents should have a right to say. Um, we are working through petition, through the Charter Review Committee, and by putting it on the ballot in twenty-twenty-six. The reason I'm bringing this up is this could force a possible delay, um, in the completion of our murals. We are actively and aggressively trying to campaign for mural funding. For the second year in a row, I received the highest grant, um, score for this county grant. Uh, we were going to get thirty thousand dollars, nineteen of which was going to go towards the mural program. I'm going to find the money. I will not give up. We will still give you the murals. Just, I beg you, just for a little time and a little faith, and I promise to deliver. I've got mural artists coming from all over the country, ready to do this, and some of them are willing to do it on an IOU basis, just for Art House. Um, let's see, I only have about a minute left, so I'm gonna keep going. These are our financial figures. Now that these are on public record, you'll be able to go over these at your leisure. Um, we have gone down, we've cut our expenses by eleven thousand dollars. In the past year, our income has gone up by around eighty-two thousand dollars. And our balance sheet, along with our profit and loss statement, that shows you where we put those funds and where we get the funds from. We are so very grateful for the opportunities. I have about forty seconds left. I wanted to, one, share with you the, um, the, the economic impact that it's gonna have on us by not getting this grant. We're losing two-hundred-and-seventeen youth art scholarships. The majority of those are Port Orange families that are affected. This is free childcare for eight-thirty in the morning until five in the afternoon. Um, free resident gallery attendance, two out of four of our child art competitions, our outreach programming. I've laid off staff and I'm reducing our classes. We are working hard. We will not give up. I've seen harder days, especially during COVID. I have one last request before I go. If it is possible, we would like for you to help share our art exhibitions and any family events that we have. We have one right now.
Don't rush, you're good.
Right now, currently, we have the Extended Display Exhibition at Art House that will be up until December ninth. It is over two-hundred works from the Halifax Art Festival Student Show, selected out of a thousand. It was the hardest thing I've ever done. They are incredible. They are amazing. I invite you and our amazing community to come see us. Thank you, guys, so much.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, Citizen Advisory Committee for the TPO, Mr. Bobby Ball. How are you, sir? Good, good to see you. Welcome.
Quick. Uh, we had our, uh, monthly meeting for the CAC for the TPO, Bobby Ball with the CAC for the TPO, sorry. Uh, we had some typical admin action items, uh, cleaning up some stuff with the, with the TPO. Uh, the biggest thing we had was also, uh, confirming the call for projects processes. And, um, since that was really just approved, but in a few months, I'll probably volunteer to continue to be on the ranking committee. So that way we keep our Port Orange projects in the top. And then we also got a presentation on the DOT's five-year work program, which also includes a couple of term length projects that the city has. And, uh, lastly, uh, there will be no December meeting, so you won't see me in December, at least for this purpose.
We'll see you next year.
You'll probably see me for something else. That's it, unless you've got any questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bobby.
Item 19, General Employee Pension Board Appointment. Is Paul Salerno here? Paul here? Let's see, Paul. Okay. Um, there is a vacancy on the General Employee Pension Board, and Mr. Salerno, who, uh, previously served on the board, who is now retired, would like to fill the vacancy of the city resident position on the board. The term is for two years and will expire in 2027, and there's only one vacancy and no other applications. Can I get a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Salerno?
Move to appoint Paul Sal, Salerino. Salerno, Salerno, thank you, uh, to the General Employment Employees Pension Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to import to, wow, see what you did to me? Point Mr. Salerno to the, uh, General Employee Pension Board. New discussion by council. New discussion on this topic from the community. Back to council. All in favor of appointing Mr. Salerno to the General Employee Pension Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five oh. Congratulations. Letting know he's been hired back to the board. All right, moving on to the regular agenda, items of tonight. Item 20, discussion waiving the 12-month waiting period for submitting a new rezoning application for the Vintage Acres site. Councilman Green, this was, uh, I think, but you brought this up, so I'm going to put this to you to put a motion on the floor for discussion.
Yeah, I brought this up last meeting, and again, it came down to, um, you know, again, we, we annexed this property knowing, uh, what the, what the finished development was going to be. Um, and, uh, but I think with, uh, not, us not being a full panel, it wasn't, uh, probably an accurate decision to be made. I just wanted to do it while we were all here on this panel. So, uh, with that, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, waive the 12-month, uh, re-application.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for a matter of discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, for the discussion of waiving the 12-month waiting period for resubmitting a rezoning application for Vintage Acres site. Um, so we're going to have some discussion here as the council, and then we will go to the public for discussion. I know several folks have already signed up and indicated they wish to discuss. For, for, just to make sure everybody understands, the topic is the motion. There is not going to be discussion about what a development might look like, how many houses, how many ponds, all that kind of stuff. It is strictly through the motion for the discussion of waiving a 12-month period. So when you guys come up to talk, that's what your comments will need to be on, is strictly on that particular item that is going to be on the floor for discussion.
And we're talking about just putting it on the agenda, on an upcoming?
No, it's on the agenda now.
The, no, no, what we're, what we're discussing here is if it's going on an agenda, correct?
Nope.
Is that not right?
That's why, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay.
We put, it is on the agenda.
Okay.
So it will be a decision made tonight.
Yeah, if you want to waive Mr. Turner.
Just to talk through what, what if, so if, if that time period is waived, the applicant would then start over. In essence, it's a new application, goes through the process. It will come back to you eventually, but it would have to go through the entire process as if it was a new application.
Right.
And what does that timeline typically take?
Five to six months?
It depends on, on how much they change, so they've got to go through a staff process, planning commission, and back here, so 90 days beyond typical.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll start with you, Lance. Back to you.
No, I'm, that's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Sean.
So I, I, I'd like to discuss, um, the reason why I supported the, his motion was because, um, we took, well, when we voted on this, it was a two-two vote. And I don't think that was a fair representation of what the citizens of this city. We have five people making votes, and, and you made it very clear that when we have a quorum, our business is going to move forward. And I respect that 100%. Correct, you know, stop me if I go out of bounds here, attorney. When we, when we annexed in the property, it was a five-oh vote. And, and I, I'm not saying that it needed to be a five-oh vote for approval of it. I'm perfectly okay with it going, um, three-two, no. We never gave it that chance. It was two-two, no. With two people in favor and two people against, and that's why this council has five people, so you don't have those split votes. And, and I know that there are going to be things that, there are going to be times where I won't be here or someone else won't be here, and we're going to go ahead and do the business of the city. But what it did was, we knew, we had an idea that this property was being annexed into the city of Port Orange to be developed, and when they came to rezonate for the development, we didn't have a full council and it went two-two and it went under. And then now the developer's asking us to, hey, can we waive that opportunity to bring it back sooner than 12 months? And, um, out of respect for anyone that wants to do business in this city, I have no problem with that. Now, I understand the history of why we had this in our code. It was because from 19, probably 90 through 2000, probably 13, we were, this council, not us, were extremely busy with developments. And I actually spoke to a former, uh, city council member today, and I said, what was the history behind the 12, 12-month waiver? And he, and honestly, he's like, well, um, you know, I don't know. He didn't have an answer. And I, I mean, I get it, back then, projects were coming probably to this staff rapidly. We were having an enormous amount of growth. The subdivisions that are out there now were not out there in 1994, 93, 90. So there was a lot going on, and if things didn't, didn't, um, weren't approved, they waited a whole 12 months because there were other projects going on that were occupying the, this, this council and the staff's work. So I think that's the history. Maybe someone that was here then can correct me, but that's the way I understand it. It was extremely busy. They didn't want to see things coming back when they were already shut down with a no. So, I don't know. I don't quite understand the history, but I think that we, we're not busy right now with new development going on in this community. We annexed in property with the idea that's what that was going to be for. And, and I want everyone to be very clear, understand that I'm not looking to annex in a whole lot of property. We're about built out in Port Orange. These are, we are pretty much built out. And I have no desires to go further, but at the same time, we welcome these people in, and now we, um, have an opportunity to have a full council possibly within the next, whenever they can bring it forward, instead of waiting a whole year. We gave them a green light and then basically gave them a red light. But we didn't truly give them a red light because there's only four of us here. So I want full representation on this project that's going forward. Will it be yes or no?
Reed?
You really ready for me?
Sure.
Why not?
Um, you, you know, I, simply put about this is, I, I'm look, I'm trying to stay very focused on what we're actually voting on here. And it's not whether or not to approve the actual project that they're trying to build. It's whether or not we're going to waive them having to wait 12 months. Um, Lance and, and Sean, who I have an immense amount of respect for, are correct. Uh, we, I was not here, and so it did fail two-two, which a tie is a fail. That's the way that it's written in our ordinances. It's the way it goes in almost, I, pretty much every government, as far as I'm aware of, in the entire United States. Um, so I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I stay very focused on this here. Um, because I don't know how I would feel about voting for the actual project. I wasn't here. I'd obviously researched a little bit, but I knew I wasn't going to be here. And so did the applicant. The applicant knew that I was not going to be in attendance. City council knew I was not going to be here. City manager knew. City manager and staff told the applicant, we will only have four of the five council. And the applicant still decided to bring it forward. They could have waited two weeks and I would have been here. I was here at that meeting. So they made the choice that led to them having that two-two vote. At the end of the day, however I'm going to vote on this comes down to one thing. What kind of precedent do I want to set going forward for other ties? I understand you can get wrapped up in the gravity of this being a very big project, and obviously there's a lot of public interest. But as every time something comes forward and it becomes a tie vote, we're going to find an excuse to bring it forward and we're going to just vote on it again, because if that's the case, we should just get rid of the 12-month thing altogether, take it off the books, and don't make anybody wait. They can just go back through the process. And Scott, you know, Sean, you do make a great point. We are at build-out. That's why the only way we're going to get any new addition is by annexing either existing homes or undeveloped property. Otherwise, nothing's getting cheaper, and we're continuing to raise taxes on our residents that are already here. So, you gotta, you can go down a very long road here, but at the end of the day, it's just what kind of precedent do we want to set on how this council is going to operate in the future on things that arise like this?
Tracy.
I agree with Reed on the age of the ordinance. It's 30-plus years old. It's like a lot of ordinances that come before us that we change as things change, you know? For me, my vote wouldn't change. It'd still be two-two. But the ordinance that we're talking about tonight is dealing with impeding business. I'm a business owner. I didn't know nothing about this ordinance until after the fact, that a 12-month hold on ever, anything. To me, that, that's, that's a bite to the city that we tie our business individuals' hands. They should be allowed due process to come out and reapply, just like anybody else. That a reapply application, maybe he comes back and it, it's a better project. Not speaking for that segment, though. What we're talking about tonight is an ordinance that is 30-plus years. Should he be able to go back and reapply? Yeah. I, I do believe that any business person should be allowed to reapply. So you want to get a better rate out of that? We won't know until that comes in front of us. So at the agenda at hand right now is dealing with an old ordinance that, I would question to Matt is after we do this, is having that ordinance revised? What do we have to do so we're not having to do this again? Do we make it? They can turn around in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, whatever it is, how do we follow that?
That's not up to the city attorney. That's up to us. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree. It's a policy question for, for the council.
Got it. But we have to go through the city attorney to make sure that we're doing it the right way. Scott?
Yeah, so regarding the history of the ordinance, the, the ordinance has, has been there, much like many, many other ordinances in the city. And just because something doesn't, again, exercise, doesn't mean you always go and change the ordinance. So developers and folks that are interested in building or developing in the community for decades and decades and decades have presented projects asking for rezoning. Sometimes they want to switch something from residential to commercial or commercial to residential, and sometimes it's, it's density changes. It happens all the time. It's happened numerous times since I've been up here, probably close to 30 or 40 times. And many, many times, those requests get denied. There's one right out there off of Hensel Road that we're all familiar with, same thing. And then the developers go back. They, they see, okay, this is not something the council was interested or the community was interested in, and it goes through the process, and perhaps it's a different developer or a different person who's interested in the land. So it happens actually quite a bit. Um, so I don't want anybody thinking that this ordinance hasn't been in play and hasn't been an option for people for decades. It has been. Whether they chose to, to exercise this part is completely up to them. Okay, so I, you know, as far as the ordinance goes, I don't, I don't have an issue with the ordinance at all because if there was a totally different thing in the next meeting and it got denied, and that person wanted to do this exact same thing, then, then they can do that. Um, whether it gets approved or not, that's up to this governing body. So, um, I, I just wanted to clarify that. Also, I think it's important to understand that annexation, which doesn't happen a lot, but the process and the concept of annexation is different than zoning. Okay, so a property can be annexed in, and then it is up to that interested party to come back with a zoning that we like. They can come back and ask, we want to make this commercial, we want to make this one unit, uh, per acre, we want to make it two units per acre, four units per acre. They can do all kinds of things. That is different than the annexation of the property. And yes, albeit I get that in the concept, and I'm not in that world, but in the concept, I get that there's a lot of moving parts, and, and there's a lot of trying to figure out, well, what if, so if we, if we do this, can we likely get a project that might be like this? Then that's the process to go for. I, I, I'm not against development in the city of Port Orange. I'm looking for good quality development. Through the course of this process, and in the last few years, we have seen several incidents that I think has given this governing body the right, rightfully, to be cautious on what we do and how we do it. Um, my, my big thing with this particular project is, still is, that there is an active study for the Spruce Creek watershed that I think plays a big factor in anything that's going on. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but let's, let's, let's not do that, okay? But, but, but plays a very significant role in our municipality. So, um, and I, and I get that the majority of the folks that we're going to speak, that are going to speak tonight, as, as did previously, they're not residents of Port Orange, they're neighbors. We appreciate you. You're welcome to come and, and, and share that. Um, but still, nonetheless, our, our role is to try, if we're going to have development, to do what's best for the community, try to, try to realize what the community is looking for, try to get the best product. And we've done that. Honestly, I, at, at one point, you know, in the past elected body, um, it, one of the council members asked, and we went back and looked, and it was like 27 out of 30 rezoning requests that were for higher density were denied. So the concept of denying is not new. It happens, right? And so it happens all over, and it's part of the process. And a lot of times those come back and they end up being better projects for the community because it's what the community wanted. You, a, a very good case in point is right out there across from Crane Lakes. We have the storage unit facility. I don't know how many times, weighed three, four times. We had folks that were wanting to put residential, townhomes, apartment, I mean, all kinds of stuff going on there, and the community didn't want it. And the property was zoned commercial, and so it became commercial. Um, so anyway, that process has existed for a really, really long time. All right, we're going to go to, uh, the public for comments. Again, I, I appreciate everybody doing this. This will expedite this. We do want to hear your concerns, and you are welcome. Um, please keep your comments. I'll, I'll tell you who, who's coming up to speak and then, uh, maybe who is next to try to help that process and move around just a little bit. Please keep your comments very specific to this motion that's on the floor on waiving the 12-month period for resubmitting a new rezoning application. And I am so sorry for mispronouncing names. I'll just say that once, hopefully. Suzanne Schneider?
Mayor, if I may, really quickly, just also in the interest of time, there is something that gets done in Tallahassee pretty frequently when there's something, when there's a lot of people that want to speak to it, just come up and say, I'm firmly against it and, and move forward, if that's all you want to do, and you just want to make sure that you do that, you have that option. Uh, that gets done in Tallahassee on, well, daily. So, you know, don't feel like you have to take all three minutes, but if you want to, and you're going to stay on that topic, take all three minutes, by all means.
Yeah, and we, and we appreciate that not everybody likes to speak in public.
That's right.
So that's okay, too. Uh, a, a, after Suzanne will be Jeff Anderson. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm just asking that you let me get through to get to my point of this item, even though it may not sound like I am. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, every other month, I attend the Roundtable of Elected Officials Flood Mitigation Meeting. It has been helpful to hear about the stormwater It has been helpful to hear about the stormwater projects and studies that various cities in the county have acted on. Much to my surprise, after the last meeting, someone sitting at the table asked me privately why I didn't bring up development as a contributor to flooding. After attending these meetings for a year, development was never discussed. The idea that older neighborhoods do not have proper infrastructure and are the issue is not the case when they have never flooded until the new development was built. If an, if an area has never flooded but has started to flood in the last three years, why deny that hydrology has changed with each new development? There is more impact on communities than self-contained stormwater storage. Any engineer will say there is no mathematical equation for the trees cut down and the water that was retained when constructing new stormwater storage. There is regret that no one talked about the impact of developments at the flood mitigation meetings all year. Resolving flooding will take more than capital improvement projects and cleaning ditches, although that is greatly appreciated. It will also take conversations about what happens when we continue to do more of the same. Building up land, cutting down trees, not addressing areas of flooding, but continuing to approve new developments that change hydrology ongoing. Gentlemen, there is no disrespect intended tonight. Knowing what we all know now about flooding, please follow the rule that is in your land development code and wait the 12 months. Why not wait and allow the changes to hydrology to catch up to what the council has already approved? Change takes time and this allows for additional funding to be pursued through state legislators for projects and for SB 180 to be repealed. You do not have to override the existing rule. It is not necessary. It also allows time for additional flood mitigation meetings and planning for the impacts of new development in the southeast region collectively. Good planning means discussions with neighbors and realizing what has been happening has not been working. I just want to add to that during my last moment here at the Roundtable of Elected Officials meeting. Mayor DePew asked for a Southeast Belusia Committee. And that would include you all. Uh, there is no competition. I don't speak for anyone but myself and Dream Green Belusia. And I'm simply asking you to consider having a southeast committee and waiting for your own flood impacts that you've already voted on. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Anderson? And then the, the next one, I apologize, I can't quite make out the first name, but I believe the last name is Margery or Maggiori, M-A-G-G-I-O-R-E. Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Jeff Anderson, 345 Country Circle Drive West, Port Orange. Uh, I think moving forward, if somebody asks me my age, my reply is going to be, I'm old enough to witness the rise and fall of common sense. But I'll get back to that. The City of Port Orange, MuniCode, Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 7 states, "Reapplication for Denied Rezoning. When an application for rezoning is denied by the city council, subsequent application for similar rezoning on any portion of the same parcel of property may not be made for 12 months from the date of the city council denial unless specifically authorized by the city council." So that's why we're here. I could not find anything specific in Port Orange's MuniCode for the reasons of, of a reapplication. However, I did find things that other municipalities would constitute as justification for the reapplication. Reapplication before 12 months, an applicant may be eligible to reapply if there's been substantial change in the facts or circumstances since the original denial. A substantial change could include a significant change in the surrounding community, a substantial change in the applicant's proposal or plans. To my knowledge, neither of those have happened. So the solution is to change the rules when they don't work in your favor. Common sense. Common sense tells us that the study that is currently being worked on will answer a lot of questions. It's a complete neglect of common sense to move forward with any land development plans on any parcel of land that will directly impact the Spruce Creek Basin without the results of that study. We have been told by lawyers and engineers that the development will have no negative impact on Spruce Creek or any other adjacent community. We have been told that the calculations make this a certainty. This is a noticeably confident train of thought. That assumes that engineers are infallible. I know this thought to be true. Recently, my wife and I had dinner with a group of friends and the very subject that we're talking about tonight came up. One of the friends is a civil engineer and made it abundantly clear that if an engineering firm made the calculations, they could not be wrong. Frankly, I was shocked. There have been many spoken, there have been many that have spoken over the past few months with credentials that weigh on this subject. I have some myself. I have worked for a medical device manufacturer for over three decades. Our firm designs, manufactures and sells devices all over the globe. As Senior Vice President, I have a hand in, in development of these products and work closely with our R and D department that consists of about a dozen engineers. And guess what? They're not always right. In my industry, problems are detected during the prototype stage, which allows for easy corrections. There is no prototype phase when, when building a development. Once it's done, it's done. Under this theory that no mistakes are made, no automobile would ever get recalled, no building would have structural defects, and there would be no such thing as product liability attorneys. Let's, let's implement some common sense and at least let the study be completed.
Thank you. I'm looking for the person, last name Maggiore, maybe? Next, thank you, sir. Next, next speaker will be Elizabeth McLune. If you want to just come right on down, be ready here in the front. Welcome.
It's a majority, like a lot of the majority. Santa Maria, majority.
Oh, okay, I got you. Go ahead.
And thank you for the time, Mayor, Councilman and staff. We really appreciate this. Uh, I am here to address two things from, one, from a leadership standpoint on this waiver that we're going to be talking about. And you are our leaders, you know? The second thing is going to be about the waiver itself and why that we feel that 12 months should wait. So Kevin Maturi is my name. And essentially, leadership is about trust and respect and integrity, having integrity. So the trust aspect of it is earned. The respect, you can give respect, we can give back respect. But the integrity, the root word is being intact. And I'm going to get back to that towards the end of this. But the main body of this is going to be on the second concern I have, which is waiving the 12 months and waiting period after the denial vote last month uh, in the rezoning application of vintage acres in Spruce Creek. Now, without waiting for the Spruce Creek Water Basin study, any developer could submit rezoning applications, which would create a much greater chance of front, of flooding in any and all communities and surrounding areas. Um, you know, a very, very smart man once said, when you continue making decisions and do the same thing over and over and expect different results, well, that's a definition of insanity. So perhaps we need to wait. You know, all of these concerned citizens about waiting um, that are standing behind me and we're heading in a lot of edgers is no different than you, Mayor. And I'm going to quote you. Our mayor said, "I'm very concerned about Spruce Creek Basin. And my interest is, I would feel a lot more comfortable today had that study been done and completed for us to see." Because ultimately, that is the heart for this area. Because ultimately, that is the heart for this area. And y'all made a decision based on that with a form and do justice. And now we would like to change because another commissioner came back. I respect that and thank you for your time, Lieutenant. But I would also like you to consider how it impacts everyone and going forward for the rest of your days and the rest of our days.
Thank you very much. Kevin, your address?
Kevin, what's your address, please?
Need it for the record.
Uh, 2168 Spring Water Lane, One Word Spring Water.
Thank you, sir. Elizabeth McLune? And then followed by Jan Albert. Jan will come down right here and be ready. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for listening to our concerns. I'm going to be short. I agree with what everybody said. I implore you to please wait until the Spruce Creek Water Basin Study has been completed before any rule changes happen or preferential treatment towards builders or developments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan Albert, followed by Gary Singleton?
Good evening, governing body. Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Jan Albert. I live at 435 Country Circle East. Been a real estate appraiser for 55 years and a hydrologist. The only thing I want to say is that I'd like you not to waive the 12 months because right now, I went to measure it. It's all stuck at the meander point. And no matter what we disagree or agree on how much water goes in there, it's stuck. It's not moving. You will find that in the basin study. So I'm asking you to hold to the 12 months until we can figure out just exactly what is what on the hydrology. Because FEMA has put an M-stamp now at that meander point, which means map revision coming. They know real-world data has changed since 17. And I can tell you that as of today, we had 62.4-inch cumulative total. So we don't, we, we, we want you not to waive the, the 12 months.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gary Singleton, followed by Gretchen Howell?
Gary Singleton, 1998 Spruce Creek Circle. The engineer's job is to get water off the client's property, ensuring their new homes do not flood. The attorney's job is to get the project approved by any means necessary, even if it means setting a dangerous precedent intended to nullify an official vote. This is intended to nullify not only this vote, but can be used in any future victories won by the public. It is we, the citizens, that will suffer the consequences of your decision tonight. Long after the engineers, attorneys and developers have banked their profits and moved on. Is this the future you want for Port Orange politics? Council members and developers with their attorneys allowed to use this rule ensuring victory even after a loss? If the developer had prevailed, would you be considering a citizen appeal to nullify that decision? Visit the site after a good rain. See for yourselves how cows are standing in millions of gallons of water. See for yourself how much rainwater is currently being held on this property. Do you truly believe you can replace a lake with retention ponds? Do you truly believe the rate and volume of discharge will be set as pre-
Down. Sorry, sir.
Sorry, sir.
Go ahead. You can continue.
Oh, as pre-development, as required by law. Are you truly confident that none of the millions of gallons of water displaced by fill will not end up in the living rooms of your neighbors? Don't be unduly influenced by words, technical calculations and staff reports meant to obfuscate the fact that there is no possible way to effectively and safely handle the millions of gallons of runoff from this property or the inadequacies of the current stormwater system. To do the right thing, all you have to do is apply the existing rules openly, evenly across the board. Deny this waiver. Do your due diligence. Review the Spruce Creek Basin Study when completed and assess the entire stormwater system to ensure it can handle the runoff from this development.
Thank you, sir. Gretchen Howell? Followed by David Walters? Welcome.
Gretchen Howell, 2685 Slow Flight Drive, Corner of Roscoe Turner, Slow Flight inside Spruce Creek. I'm here to advocate that you do not foreshorten the period. Give yourself the whole year. The Spruce Creek Basin Study is going to come out and I am going to make a prediction. It's going to be worse than what folks are currently saying it might be. Here's why. How many of you have ever been on a website called spaceweather.com? It predicts solar influence that drives our weather. We are having, we're in the middle of a solar storm right now. That's why your radios aren't working so good, your cell phones aren't working so good. And one thing that it's going to do is increase our rain. That's why we had heavy rain last year. They say we're already into a solar maximum cycle. Those cycles persist for three to five years. If we don't wait for the Spruce Creek Basin Study and hopefully it will have a prognostication of what happens when we're in a solar maximum and it is raining like crazy, we will have flooding beyond your wildest nightmares. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Walters? Father Victor Lopez? Be next.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is David Walters, 2608 Spruce Creek Boulevard. So I'm in Spruce Creek Line. Uh, my family's been here for decades. My dad was born in Daytona Beach in 1950 and he moved our family to Port Orange in 1985 around. Uh, we were one of the first families to move into the Vanquish subdivision. I've been here my entire life. In fact, Councilman Green, I used to program video games with your younger brother, Wyden.
Okay.
I joined the Air Force. I moved away for 13 years and I came back with my wife and at the time, my six-month-old son. I thought Port Orange is the best place in the world because I have traveled the world. It's the best place for me to raise my family. Everything's great. Two years later, Hurricane Ian hits. Spruce Creek Basin floods. It floods into my home. A tree that was on the Spruce Creek Basin collapsed and fell on my garage. I'm very fortunate that I was able to deal with that, but so many families here are not. My son, who was two years old, that's his first memory. If I ask him what he did, he remembers the tree falling. He remembers standing in ankle-deep water. Last year during Hurricane Milton, he asked me again, Dad, is our home going to flood? That's what he asked me every time it rains now. So that's what I have to deal with. He's five. He say that I'm not a resident of Port Orange and that may be true by technicality, but my son goes to Cypress Creek. Okay? I play in the Port Orange rec leagues, my son plays, everything. My life revolves around the city of Port Orange. So when you build over what is once a lake and you turn it into concrete, it will flood. We have to know the effects, what's going to happen when we apply vintage acres because I really don't want my home to flood again. And we know what happens when the developers get their way. They build, they move on. Venetian Bay, right down the street from where this place will be, I know those developers. They packed up and moved to Georgia. They're gone. They don't have to deal with it, but I'll tell you that the residents of Venetian Bay are kayaking through the streets during hurricanes. So I want one day for my son to go away, just like I did, start a life and then choose to move back to Port Orange. But he's not going to if the city is underwater or it's full of concrete. We have to know the effects of what is going to happen when we build vintage acres or any other community in that area. We have to know it before my home floods again and for our children's sake, we want this city to continue to thrive because I do believe it is a beautiful city. We have to know before we cause more misery for all of the kids who had to sit there in their home in knee-deep water wondering when they'll be able to move back. It's going to happen again next year. We're going to have another hurricane. It's going to happen. I hope you're ready to answer to those children as well.
Uh, after Father Lopez, it'll be Mike Gonatoski?
Victor Lopez, 2156 Spring Water Lane, Port Orange. I've been asked to read a letter to you from Anzbacher Lord, dated 18 November 2025, hand-delivered to Mayor Scott Stiltner. Ray, Vintage Acres Rezoning. Dear Mayor Stiltner, Anzbacher Law has been retained by Spruce Creek Property Owners Association, Inc. regarding the proposed vintage acres development. We are writing specifically to address an item which may come before the city council on November 18, 2025, that involves a request by the applicant to waive the requirement of Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 7 of the City's Land Development Code, LDC. The applicant must wait 12 months to submit another zoning request. On behalf of the client, we object to the request to waive that provision of the LDC. And let me explain. We understand that Port Orange recently annexed 56.5-acre parcel. After the annexation, the applicant sought to amend the future land use map flume of the Port Orange Comprehensive Plan and to rezon the property. Our client amended, attended the public hearings held by the city council and objected to the land use changes. The city commission denied both the flume amendment and the rezoning request. Unfortunately, the applicant is now seeking to resubmit the application for rezoning. Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 7D of the LDC provides as follows. Reapplication is denied, uh, for denied rezoning. Where an applicant for rezoning is denied by the city council, subsequent application for similar rezoning of any portion of the same period of the property may not be made for a 12-month period from the date of- same period of the property may not be made for a 12-month period from the date of the City Council denial unless specifically authorized by the City Council. You will note that the provisions of the LDC do not apply to the FLUM amendment. As you know, Florida law requires that all zoning decisions shall be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, Section 163.3194, Florida statute. This is why the applicant sought to amend the FLUM because it is necessarily a legal condition precedent to the rezoning. Consequently, we are of the opinion that Port Orange cannot waive the 12-month limitation of the reapplication of the zoning, of the rezoning request because it would first require an amendment to the FLUM, which was previously denied by the City Council. To conclude, we submit that Port Orange City Council should not authorize the application to approve the 12-month period governing the reapplication of the zoning request. This is yours, Terrell A. Alken, Attorney at Law.
Thank you. Mike? Meredith Cassandra will be up next. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me here today. On October 21st, when we split before you concerning Vintage Acres, this council did the right thing. After hearing from the lawyers, the engineers, developers, staff, all of us and each other, you did the right thing. You used the information, facts, opinions, and the numbers to deny the Vintage Acres development. It was understood that a Spruce Creek watershed study was underway, as approved by the Volusia County Council on April 1st, and that the results are due in the spring of next year. And the mayor and Councilman Grubbs agreed to wait until that study was completed and a report submitted before allowing any further development within the city that falls within the Spruce Creek watershed area. Common sense. Now, here we are one month later, and the two councilmen who voted in favor of the project, Councilman Green and Geppert, both supporters of Patus, Homes and Development, have decided to challenge the city's long-standing development code and waive the mandatory 12-month wait, as required by law, before submitting the plan again for approval. This is an unprecedented move. Councilman Foley was absent, and we have yet to see where he comes down on this issue. What has changed? Has the developer lowered the densities, agreed to put the houses up on stem walls instead of draining, filling, and building another slab on Grand Cookie Cutter Subdivision in a market where even the well-established middle class are priced at a range? Has the developer agreed to an additional 30-year bond that covers actual damages to adjoining property owners and the overwhelming, about the already overwhelmed Spruce Creek Basin? The answer's no. Mrs. Green and Geppert have just agreed to allow the developer to get a second bite at the apple, one otherwise denied to all others that come before this body. To be clear, just because someone purchases attractive land and gets it annexed into the city does not mean that it automatically is assumed that it gets to be rezoned and densities increased, allowing unfettered development at the detriment of the neighbors, citizens, and the environment and the city's future. You already mentioned that you're buying bulldozing homes because of flooding issues. We listened to all the experts in October, all in favor of this development, regardless of what the citizenry wanted or needed. Well, who here represents the citizens besides the citizens themselves? Not staff, not the lawyers, not developers, but the officials that are elected for that purpose, you. We think you should vote no on the waiver, wait till the study comes in, look at the facts, look at what we can afford to develop in the city of Port Orange, and then move forward with what makes sense. The developer can come back with something different for that piece of property that makes sense, that is safe for the neighborhood, safe for the watershed, and safe for the community. That's all we're asking, not to waive the 12-month wait as it is by law right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith Cassandra. And then Jessica Sizma-Zack? Sorry?
Meredith Cassandra, 1849, Spruce Creek Boulevard, Port Orange. I've been asked to read a letter from Jeff Brower to the Port Orange Council from November 17. Dear Mayor Stiltner and the Port Orange Council, I was pleased, as were many of your residents who are concerned about more development and possible flooding, that your council did not pass the rezoning for the Vintage Acres development. That was a wise decision that would give the city and the county time to consider the recently approved Spruce Creek Basin Study. The findings and recommendations that will be provided in that study are necessary to evaluate how our constituents can be protected and best served as we grow. Although I am writing this email from my own perspective and do not speak for the entire council, I would very much like to see the county and the city work together to resolve the flooding that our residents are experiencing. It will take six to 12 months for this study to be completed. It is well worth the wait to protect our constituents with this timely information before resuming any development in the area. In order to have all of the information required to make a responsible decision, I urge you all to proceed with the caution that is already provided in your land development code. Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 8 requires a 12-month waiting period before accepting a subsequent rezoning application. This would ensure the public is well protected and the landowner has the most up-to-date information to plan the future of the property. The time and consideration this council takes to make these decisions is significant and requires much research and evaluation. I appreciate the time each of you puts into your decisions. Thank you.
Jessica? And then after Jessica will be Brian White.
Okay. Just one thing. My last name is Shipshack.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I just want you to take into consideration the fact that it would probably be wise to wait until the Spruce Creek Basin Study is done because it's obviously going to have an impact on whether or not this development can go through in its critical state. And also, I don't think letting them skip the waiting line would be nice. And yeah, I don't know. I guess there may be they're trying to outpace the Spruce Creek Basin Study on purpose. I don't know. I mean, it's just me. Because think about it, if all of a sudden they have a bunch of legal fees there, like I want to do it in its critical state anymore. So yeah, I would just say, please make them wait the 12 months.
Thank you, Jessica.
We need an address. Sorry. Thank you.
Brian White, and then Hart Fesenden.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Brian White, 2464 Lydia Way in New Smyrna Beach. I'm also here as a board member at Thousand Friends of Florida, which is a land use advocacy nonprofit that's present statewide. So tonight I'm speaking in opposition of waiving the 12-month waiting period for a new rezoning application. I want to focus on this one thing, why the 12-month rule exists, why it's standard across Florida and throughout the country, and why it's critically needed in this case. The 12-month rule is not arbitrary. It's a fundamental guardrail. And every serious land use code includes a similar provision. 12 months is the universally accepted cooling-off period after a rezoning denial. Why? Because without it, developers could file the same application over and over until they eventually wear down staff, council members, and the public. The rule prevents what planners call rezoning fatigue. It protects the integrity of the process, it ensures fairness, and it maintains public trust. This is not a punishment for the applicant. It's a standard procedural safeguard used in every city, city after city across Florida. And the rule exists because land use decisions require stability. Land use decisions guide the future of the entire city, and if applications can keep coming back repeatedly, the process becomes political instead of data-driven. The 12-month rule ensures time for conditions to meaningfully change, time for new engineering or environmental information to emerge, time for neighbors to fully understand what was proposed, and time for the city to evaluate broader impacts. Without that time, decisions become reactive rather than thoughtful. Waivers of this kind are supposed to be rare. Cities treat waivers as extraordinary requests, not matters of routine, not expected, indefinitely not developer-driven. Typically, waivers are granted only if substantial changes have been made to the project and new facts exist that make prior denials outdated. Here, there are no substantial project changes, and critically, the most important new facts, the results of the Spruce Creek Basin Stormwater Study, do not exist yet. Which brings me to the most important point. The 12-month rule is especially needed right now. We are in the middle of a study, a study taxpayers are funding specifically because stormwater, flooding, and water quality concerns in this basin are extremely serious. Granting a waiver means making a land use decision without the stormwater data, without evaluating impacts, and without the engineering. If you waive the rule tonight, you create a precedent that applies to every developer. Once you waive it once, you no longer have a meaningful 12-month rule. Developers will expect instant resubmittals after every denial. Future councils will be boxed in, and the purpose of the rule, fairness, predictability, and stability, will evaporate. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Hart Fesenden, followed by Catherine Pante. Welcome, sir.
Hi there. I live in Port Orange, and most of what I wanted to say has been said repeatedly, so I won't go through all that. But I do want to say one thing, which, Mayor, I think you really hit it out of the park. We want good development, and we want to do it sensibly, and we clearly want to wait for the basin study so that we can determine whether this project's going to work or not. One other thing that hasn't been touched on is that you are all elected officials, and this is your constituency out here, the voters. And it's pretty clear to me that the voters do not want this project. And I ask you all to please consider that, that we elected you to represent us and our desires. And what I'm seeing here is that we've got a packed house of people that aren't for the project. I think if we went out in the street and walked around, we'd find another packed house. And I hope you guys can think about the people of Port Orange and not just the developers. Thank you.
Catherine Pante, followed by Davis Gall. Welcome.
Catherine Pante, good evening, Commissioners. Catherine Pante, slow the growth of Volusia. First, I want to thank those of you who voted against the Vintage Acres rezoning on October 21st. Your decision protected this community and respected the concerns raised by residents. Tonight, I strongly oppose granting the waiver to a 12-month waiting period for resubmitting a rezoning application for the Vintage Acres site. This rule outlined in Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 7 of the Land Development Code exists for a clear purpose: to preserve the integrity of the city's review process, ensure thoughtful, long-range planning, and prevent developers from repeatedly pushing premature proposals, especially while we are still awaiting the Spruce Creek Water Basin Study, which will not be complete until spring 2026. The 12-month waiting period provides essential time for reflection, revision, and community engagement. The applicant has only had a few weeks since the denial, nowhere near the time required to develop a substantially improved proposal. If council is asked to review a similar application without meaningful changes, staff time and public resources are wasted, and public trust in the process is undermined. Granting this waiver would also set a damaging precedent. If one applicant can sidestep established rules simply by asking, others will expect the same treatment. At that point, the Land Development Code becomes optional, and decisions begin to appear arbitrary rather than grounded in policy, planning, and fairness. I also want to speak plainly about public perception. A request like this gives the appearance of quid pro quo from one builder who sits on the commission to another who made the request. For the numbers guide, the stakes are not hypothetical. During Hurricane Ian, 7,000 homes flooded, as well as 1,000 businesses, five Volusia County residents drowned, and VCSO performed over 1,000 high-water rescues. These are not numbers on a page. These are lives, families, and neighborhoods. When exactly will development decisions begin prioritizing public safety and public health over private development interests? U.S. Commissioners have a fundamental responsibility to protect the well-being of your residents. You are under no obligation to approve development applications that increase risk, jeopardize public safety, erode community confidence, or compromise long-term planning. In closing, I urge you to uphold the integrity of our rules and the integrity of this commission. Follow the code as written. Do not waive the 12-month rating period. Require the applicant to come back only when the process and supporting data supports a meaningful review. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Followed by Adam Novy. Welcome.
Hello, new neighbors. My name is David Gall. Last time I was here, I failed to acknowledge your new neighbor status. Thank you. And I hope you will be good neighbors. Six months ago, my neighbor was a farm, and it was a Volusia County farm. You guys decided to annex it. How did that happen? The proponent saw that he could build some houses on that farm. He looked around, and he did a calculation. Can I get this past the Volusia County Council? Probably not. So he came over and tapped you guys on the shoulder and said, hey, if you'll be my friend and annex this farm, I'll be able to buy this farm and turn it into a lot of houses. Don't know if that'll help your taxpayers or not. I would guess that that's a good motivation. So you guys came to the people and said, what do you think? And we said, we don't like it. But you voted to annex it anyway, and you're moving forward with the proponent's proposal. Now, the proponent hasn't bought the farm yet. He's got a contract on that plant, but he doesn't know that. The farmer is still there. It's still zoned agricultural or some limbo zoning in between the county and the city zoning. And your task is to determine when and how to rezonate to fit into your rules. Six months ago, I wasn't your constituent. I'm still not your constituent, but you're my new neighbor, and the land that used to be Volusia County, where I was a constituent, is now yours. So I'm approaching you as a nonconstituent, but a very concerned neighbor. And I'm hoping you will be good neighbors to us, as Volusia County would have been had this been brought to Volusia County. Now, the proponent hasn't bought the property yet. The proponent seeks to get it turned into housing, but if he fails, he's out the cost of his legal expenses so far, his engineering expenses so far, and a little more. If he succeeds and he floods our land, then we're all out the cost of our homes, and our livelihoods will be severely affected. So tonight, you seek to undermine, to abrogate, to subvert your own rule. Six months ago, you didn't even have jurisdiction over this land, and now you seek to undermine your own rule to expedite the process that your friend, the proponent, tapped you on the shoulder and said, be my friend. Help me build this house. I'll give you taxes. Be a good neighbor and follow your own rules. Don't wait for 12 months. Give us time to discuss this. Go to the water study to come in and make a reasoned, thoughtful decision, as Mayor Stiltner, Congress, or Councilman Grubbs, and Mayor Foley have said so eloquently tonight. Vote no. Vote no on extending, or sorry, waiving the 12-month rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Novy.
Adam.
No Adam?
Yeah, he's right here.
Adam Novy, 1062 Wexford Way. I live three streets behind the library right here. So nowhere near Vintage Acres. Starting to get more involved, and this is near and dear to my heart. A couple of people have come and talked about how this city is their home. This has been my born and raised here. I just got to say something. Obviously, my opinion of the acres is a different meaning. This is just for the extension to speak to that. Time is the only equalizer we have. This is on the books. Development have counsel that we're 24/7, every day. They will win eventually. We have residents of Volusia County, Port Orange, New Smyrna, everybody here. I actually got a call about three hours ago. I work for a living. I forgot this was even happening tonight. We don't stand a chance. Time is the great equalizer to give everybody a sense of brevity, to say, hey, where do we stand? Because without this time, without this 12 months, the other gentleman here, that was really well-spoken, rezoning fatigue, yep, I got that. 100%. I drive all the way down. I mentioned last time that I do windows and doors in the area. I go between zero-lin line houses. It's perpetually flooded. But again, that's not what we're here for. The extension, though, the time to allow the little guy to compete on a scale where we can't compete financially. So the timeframe for 12 months gives the developer a sense of pause because if they know if they overpush and they get pushed down, they will have to wait 12 months. Well, guess what? If they had come out with a 40-house development, everybody here probably would have signed off on it. Nobody's against development. We're against overdevelopment. So I think the timeframe is appropriate. I would ask the council to deny the 12 months. I want to make sure I say it right. It's getting confusing.
You got it.
Deny the 12-month extension on the behest of just your citizens and our new neighbors, from what I hear last time. So thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Joey. Welcome.
Joey.
It's whether we can submit. That's simply the question. It isn't a blessing for the project. It isn't a blessing for its design. It isn't saying yes or no in one way, direction, or the other. And we'd have to meet all the requirements of submittal. I think it was alluded to that a lot of studies that, of course, the basin study being one, being forthcoming, that's a reality that existed when we submitted, and that's still a reality that exists today. And that doesn't change. And again, at the wisdom of the council and their decision-making, that's still the basis of what can be a no vote at some future point. That doesn't change. And the process in the code allows for this. It does state that it's the direction of this council that would be the final body to allow the waiver of that process. And I think I'd heard the Hensel vote was an interesting example to point to, because if I recall correctly, that hearing got continued many times, and there were many back-and-forth discussions while it was a pending application. And what resulted is a, you know, collaboration with neighbors. And funny enough, that I think the irony being is that ended up being a no vote anyway. But the collaboration happened, that there was an opportunity to have those discussions. And that's what I'm asking today, that the opportunity is now to have those discussions with the neighbors, to approach them while an application's moving, because a month or a year from now, these contracts are not contracts anymore. This project isn't a project, and I'm sure that there's folks out here that that's the outcome they want to see, but that's not the outcome that I'm looking to try to continue the dialogue with. And that was precisely why I got up at the end of that meeting on October 21st and tried to insist that we have a reconsideration to continue that dialogue. I, you know, again, I thoroughly understand the facts as presented and the developers' understanding. I'm not here to dispute that. I'm just here to mention that we have an opportunity to at least have that discussion and come back and tweak the plan based on what we heard. You know, it's a very narrow situation. It's an annexation. You know, I'm not sure there's many examples, if any, except the one I can think of that fits that mold. And at the end of the day, the conclusion can still be the same with the same dialogue. So the developers are just asking from that perspective, again, we all can have our opinions about the 2-2 and whether full council is, you know, the appropriate means for having that decision-making, but you're really all we're asking for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Don't let me do my job, okay? Thank you, guys. Was there anybody else, Amanda? Got everybody? Okay, so discussion, back to council. Council comments? Lance, we'll start with you.
I mean, again, you know, I think, like you say, you know, this comes down to trying to do the right thing, and also it comes down to a set of parameters. And, you know, maybe we just need to stay within the parameters here, and let's get a little more due diligence.
Sean?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Reed?
I got a lot to say. I'm gonna take my three minutes. Now, I appreciate everyone being here, you know. There are clearly, it's a lot of neighbors. It's not a lot of voters, but that doesn't mean that we don't represent you in some capacity. And didn't mean to upset you, sorry. This, I knew this was going to be important, just from a personal side, here's how important it was to me to be here. I was working until 4:00 a.m. in Las Vegas last night, Eastern time, but either way, and I managed to still get two hours of sleep, get on an earlier flight, and be here in time for this meeting, so that way that I could do my job and I could represent my voters and my neighbors. I understand the concern in the room. As much as, you know, we're talking about the 12-month thing, that's what we're voting on, that's really just a means to an end for people that don't want to see anything ever developed there. And I understand why. My home flooded twice. I have a nine-year-old and a two-year-old. And when our home flooded the first time, we were walking in ankle-deep water, as was said, and I did have to tell my kid, you know, this is what it is, and it's okay. We're, you know, we're gonna get through it, right? So I understand that concern, and I know what it's like. It sucks. It's not fun. And I will tell you, questions go away. It takes time, but my kid doesn't ask me every time if it rains anymore, if we're gonna flood, but it definitely takes time. You know, I do have to give some credit to the developer in the side that when this property, when they came forward and asked for us to annex this thing in, they're crystal clear about what they were going to propose. And because I wasn't here for the vote, and because that's not what we're voting on, I won't say how I would have voted if I was here. What I'm voting on -- did I upset you too?
Yeah.
Please. What I'm voting on today is whether or not to allow this kind of bypass of this extension. And of all the people who got up and spoke, first off, you know, our resident, Adam, I appreciate you, and also Brian White, talking about the background of the 12-month waiting period, because it's funny, when I was sitting here trying to think of comparison is, you know, if my son failed a test, would I let him come back tomorrow and take the exact same test and give me the exact same answers, or would I send him back to maybe study and learn a little more and maybe come back with better answers, so that way he gets a better grade on the test? And that's kind of where I've landed on this, is I've sat here. You know, I don't know whether or not a Spruce Creek Basin Study is going to matter one way or another. If that study came back and it was, said, hey, it's fine, you can build anything you want to here, I don't think that that's going to mean that this room won't be empty of people that don't want to see it. Numbers are only what they are if you believe them. And a lot of people don't believe facts anymore, and not just in this subject, in several subjects. But as I said earlier, the key word for me here is setting a precedent. I'm not going to be in this seat forever. None of us are. And I, this rule has been in place for a long time, and 30 years, and most governments have it, and there's a reason. I don't know that there's not a serious consideration in the future for reducing it from 12 months to six, but I'm not looking to make special exceptions tonight. That just doesn't interest me. And so while I appreciate where we are, and I understand the gravity of everything, there's a lot here, the key word for me is that, or the key thing for me is that I'm not going to be in this seat forever, and I have had the benefit of sitting in this seat, watching Mayor Stiltner for years with other councils before I ever sat here. And they did things a certain way, because it produced results. And I found that if you ever change the way you do things, then that's the new way. And it's that way forever with everything, until someone eventually gets tired of it and changes it again. And I just don't see tonight as a time to make a change, so.
Tracy. All right. All right, so back to council. We have a motion and a second on the floor to waive the 12-month waiting period for submitting a new rezoning application for the Vintage Acres site. Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Foley.
The red shirt told you, didn't it? No.
Councilman Gepfer.
No.
Councilman Green.
No.
Vice Mayor Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Sill.
No. 4-1, the motion is denied. We're gonna take a five-minute recess for a quick little break. I got heat.
No.
Councilman Green.
No.
Vice Mayor Grubbs.
Yes.
Mayor Sill.
No. For one, the motion is denied. We're gonna take a five-minute recess for a quick little break. I got heat.